Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of North and East Plans Panel. My name is councillor Acton and I will be chairing today's meeting. Can't see any members of the public. North and East Plans Panel deals with applications from the north, east and the east of the city. The aim of the panel is to hear the relevant information from applicants, members of the public, council officers to help members of the panel to make their decisions. Could I now invite members and the officers to introduce themselves and mute your microphone once you have introduced yourselves? So I'll start from Andrew.
Thank you, Chair. Andrew Crates, Principal Planning Officer.
Good afternoon. I'm Lisa Brannan, Principal Engineer, Highways.
And councillor Michael Miller, representing Kipaks and Methley Ward.
Afternoon councillor Nicole Lloyd and I represent Temple News and Ward.
Councillor Jules Hesselwood, representing Wheatwood Ward.
Councillor Bromley, representing Horstford and Rodden Ward.
Councillor Ray, representing Bromley and Stanley and Le Ward.
Hi, Hannah Bithall, representing Kirkstall.
Councillor Simon Sirdry from the Putsey Ward.
Right, Ryan Stevenson, representing the Howard Ward.
Good afternoon. I'm Debbie Oldham and I'm clerk to the panel.
Good afternoon. Philippa Pluntree Varley, Principal Legal Officer for Planning and Highways and Legal Advisor to Panel this afternoon.
Good afternoon. Jonathan Carr, Head of Development Management.
Good afternoon. David Newbury, Lead Planning Officer for the Plans Panel.
Thank you. Moving on to the agenda, could I ask the clerk to go through item one and five, please, Debbie?
Thank you, Chair. Under agenda item one, there are no appeals against the refusal of inspection of documents. Under agenda item two, there are no exempt items. Under agenda item three, there's no late items. Under agenda item four, could I ask members to declare any interests? I'll take silence as there are none. Under agenda item five, apologies have been received on behalf of councillor Jenkins and councillor Hesselwood is attending as his substitute. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to item six, minutes of previous meeting held on the 21st of November 2024. Do members accept these minutes as correct record? Thank you councillor Sharps. Anyone to second? Thank you councillor Miller. Moving on to the rising from the minutes, are there any matters arising from the minutes? No? Right, moving on to item seven, can I ask Andrew to present this report, please?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, this is one of two applications this afternoon which relate to the Roots allotment site on Selby Road, Garth. Both applications requested to be submitted at Plans Panel by council, Ward councillor Mark Dobson. So in terms of the first application, which is for retention of two shipping containers for use as a site office and tool shed, so just the location plan, if I can get the mouse working, members of this morning attended a site visit and be familiar with the site on the south side of Selby Road in Garth, just around on the top of the screen. Garth likely sits to the north, former agricultural field. Just in terms of the geography, Leeds Road leading off to Kipaks is approximately 170 metres to the west and Nylons Lane around 300 metres to the east. So again, in terms of the development plan, the site sits within this area, within the Green Belt, Garth to the north, the Selby Road following this alignment. So in terms of the site, it's currently being used for allotments in part with a related site office and tool shed. The site office is located on the eastern side of the site, just to the west of Providence Farm, where there's a collection of buildings, farm buildings with some landscaping around. And there's a tool shed in a separate building close to the entrance of the site. So in terms of dimensions, the office element of it is 7.3 metres by 2.5, is 2.6 metres in height, and the shed is 6 metres by 2.4 metres in width and 3.2 metres in height. And there's some elevations of the two buildings, which are effectively shipping containers which have been painted. So the site office is painted a dark grey colour, where the tool shed painted a dark green. So in terms of the site, this is a view taken from the south side of, sorry, from the north side of Selby Road looking south. It's just looking across the vegetation on the south side of Selby Road, looking towards the allotments as they exist. The next photo is a zoom in of that area, and the dark box you can see on the horizon, that's the office referred to, which is already in situ. Now we saw on site this morning, this is the site access into the area. It was actually already a field access, and you can see that dropped curb crossing which already existed, and that access historically entered the field and veered round to the right-hand side. One thing to point out, since these photographs were taken, is that the TP, which is referred to in the report, which you can just about see the timber structure of, that's since been removed from site. And then again, looking at the entrance panning round to the left, you can see the advertisement sign, which is the subject of a separate application this afternoon. And just behind that is the tool shed, which you can see in this photograph here, as I say, dark green-coloured painted shipping container. And these two shots are taken before the allotments are in situ, and this is looking along Selby Road to the site on the right-hand side. And again, that's the access there looking from the east. So in terms of the key issue, sort of taking the report as read, one of the key issues is the fact that historically the site has been an arable field and is therefore agriculture allotment. Agriculture, in terms of the definition of agriculture, and in terms of the definition of development, that explicitly excludes agriculture. So it's not a matter, so the use of the site as allotments is not a matter for planning consideration. But what does require planning permission is the site office and the tool shed as per the planning application. So on that basis, in terms of usual planning considerations, given the location within Green Belt, the question is then whether or not those two structures preserve openness. And in this instance, as per the photographs and the site visit this morning, the site office is adjacent to other farm buildings, adjacent to Providence Farm, and the tool shed is located behind the existing hedge on Selby Road. Both buildings are relatively modest in size, and they're also dark recessive colours, which are something we'd usually seek to achieve in a rural location. So on that basis, in visual and in spatial terms, the two structures are considered to not give rise to any harm to openness. The other aspect to the scheme, and as is referenced in the letters of objection, is in relation to potential highway impact. Again, the highway impact arising from people using the allotments is not something for consideration, but what can be subject to consideration is the highway impact from the site office and the tool shed. And what we do know is there'll be one part-time operative within that site office. Currently, they apparently access the site via Providence Farm, but that site to the east falls outside the red line boundary, and so any parking arrangements or access couldn't be controlled by condition. So we have to rely on the fact that somebody may well, in the future, come off of Selby Road, park in this area and then access the site office. And on that basis, from a highway perspective, it's considered that there is potentially a material impact and therefore some improvement needs to be made to that access to make it safe. And on that basis, there's a condition to be applied requiring a visibility display of 2.4 by 90 metres in either direction. And out to the east, as we saw this morning, that would require some clearance of vegetation where it's grown effectively right up to the back edge of the curb. Having checked Google Street View, it's clearly grown quite a bit in recent years, but there is quite a thick hedgerow along this area. And so cutting that back would achieve that visibility display. Around the access to Providence Farm, it's actually quite clear already, so the area of vegetation is here. And then out to the west, it's a relatively clear line of sight. The other requirement is to hard surface the first five metres of that access and also make it wide enough to allow two-way passing of vehicles. So on that basis, it means that the access is acceptable for the purposes of the person working in the site office, but it's also of benefit to future allotment holders as well. In terms of other aspects, in terms of visual amenity, kind of allied to the discussions around Green Belt impact, in terms of the sighting and design and colour, again, considered to be acceptable in design terms. In terms of residential amenity, the both buildings are situated some way from the nearest properties, which sit to the north of Selby Road on Cotswold Drive. So although they face the site, they are separated from it by some distance. Notwithstanding officers' view that there's likely to be very limited residential amenity, in fact, there is a condition suggested which restricts the hours of use, so they couldn't be used late into the evening. And again, that kind of underpins the view that there will be no detrimental impact on residential amenity. So on that basis, the application is considered to be acceptable and is recommended for approval, subject to the conditions in the report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Andrew. We have speaker against the application. Could I invite councillor Dobson and Mr Riley to come to the table? And between both of you, you have four minutes to share. And once you're ready, if you can present your case, please.
Can you hear me? Is that okay?
That one's working, this one isn't. Do you want to just pop that off and just see if mine's working as well?
Yes. Good afternoon, panel. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. Four minutes between us, so very briefly, hoping that the panel members will wish to expand on the arguments put forward. Still significant concerns regarding the busy A63 and the impact that this application will have on traffic flow at an already significant location, being one of the two main feeder roads into the town. And also, still a few issues to be resolved regarding the actual sighting of the office and the tool shed themselves. No argument really on the fact that agricultural use is still the primary focus, although it is now allotment. But I think I would question and would like the opportunity to expand perhaps on the fact that if this were agricultural land per se, then would there be any need for extra tool shed and extra office? It was agricultural land before functioning as such without either of those buildings being on Green Belt land. I do struggle with the concept that this has been done retrospectively. I do think that presents problems for panel and certainly me as a member, that we're now presented with something of a fait accompli. And again, if the opportunity arises to panel, I'd just like the opportunity to expand on that.
Thank you, Chair. The Garth Neighbourhood Plan specifically refers to the importance of the openness of the land occupied by the applicant, and the chief planning officer has mentioned this. It also states that the area within which the allotment falls has both landscape character, as it has key views, and also landscape features, its hedges and trees. And it specifically shows the views that residents have requested to be protected. This development neither retains nor enhances the landscape character of the land as required by the neighbourhood plan. Just turning briefly into national planning law, the Green Belt tests under paragraph 154 of the National Planning Policy Framework apply, and the applicant must demonstrate that the facilities are appropriate and the facilities preserve openness and do not conflict with Green Belt purposes. If they fail to meet both these tests, then the development is deemed to be inappropriate development. Our view is that these two tests are not met. And I would refer you to the Tring Appeal Decision Case Law, where a similar application was deemed inappropriate development and refused. There's also a strong presumption against inappropriate development within the Green Belt unless very special circumstances can be demonstrated. The applicant has not put forward any meaningful circumstances to counteract the visual disparity within the landscape that has now arisen, nor has the applicant shown a local need for a 350-plot allotment site. Indeed, the applicant continues to advertise in areas outside Garth and also outside Leeds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Riley. Any questions for the speakers? Councillor Miller?
Thanks, Chair. Councillor Dobson, you referenced some specific concerns around the sighting of the containers. Would you just be able to elaborate on what they are?
Thanks, councillor Miller. I think to go back to my original point, and it was raised in the Garth Development Plan, that was only adopted, if memory serves, in 2023, that there wouldn't, that that piece of property would be protected in terms of its original use as agricultural. So the sighting of the tool shed and the office would be deemed, in my opinion, in addition to what was only accepted, what we're talking, less than 18 months ago. So I do think that we do have concerns about extra sighting of buildings, facilities, call them what you will, on what is a piece of Green Belt land. I think obviously the other thing it does for us, councillor Miller, is it's yet another chink, isn't it, in opening that door to what is and what isn't acceptable on agricultural land. As I say, it's always been agricultural land in use without the need for any extra facilities. It's pleasing, I passed this morning and ahead of the site visit, the TP is now gone. But again, I would question in regards to the neighbourhood plan, which is less than two years old and was adopted on referendum by the people of Garth, then perhaps panel might be mindful to honour that, as it is still so recent that it was accepted by the local authority.
Councillor Hesselwood?
Yeah, just at the end of your speech there, you said that the applicant hasn't demonstrated the need for allotment plots. But around the city, we've got waiting lists for allotment plots everywhere. And I was going past this particular allotment plot a lot last year and saw the sign. And if I didn't live right over the other side of the city in the west, I was going to apply for one of these plots, because we have got such a waiting list around, not just in this city, but, you know, everywhere. So I'd like to know where you got that information from, that there is no need for these allotment plots, because quite frankly, I think we all know that there is.
I actually said they haven't demonstrated the need for a 350-plot allotment. Now, in terms of demand in Garth, the allotments, there are four allotment sites in Garth. They've got a very small waiting list of, I think it was 14 at the last count, which normally will be, which would normally be filled within, you know, it's a 12-month wait at the most. I'm actually an allotmentier on a site, a large site in North Leeds, where in fact we had a waiting list of 50 during Covid. The last time we wanted to go to the waiting list, basically we filled the site from the waiting list. And we, in September of last year, there was nobody on the waiting list. So it varies. There's some areas of Leeds where there's a big demand still and few allotments, and others where that demand does not exist. It's out of date, basically, the information.
David, do you want to come in?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just to clarify, this issue of the land use in terms of allotments, that has no bearing on the decision because it's an agriculture use, they don't need planning permission for that. So the applicant doesn't need to justify their position in respect of the need for the allotments or the existence of the allotments. It's just not within our gift or within our control.
Thank you for that, David. Councillor Sharp?
Thanks, Chair. Just clarification, the report says 250 plots, but you keep mentioning 350. Just for clarification, is it 250 or 350?
Thank you, Chair. You mentioned traffic concerns along that road. Obviously, I live at the other side of Leeds. Obviously, you know the area well. Can you explain where you think the traffic will come from?
Yeah, for those of you that are familiar with the geography of Garth, we're kind of roadlocked on three sides. To the east, you've got the Ridge Road, which borders Kipaks and Methley Ward. To the south, you have the A63, which is the road in question. And to the north, you've got the A642. So basically, if you want to get in or out of Garth for any given time, then you've really got one of three options to sort of navigate your way around the town. And the A63, out of those three feeder roads, is by far the busiest. Historically, this has always presented problems. Further up the road, going east, you have the junction with Nylons Lane, a site of several accidents over the years. Going to the west, just beyond the site, you have the junction with the Leeds Road into Kipaks, which is historically called, for reasons I know not, Charlie Sweep's Corner. And over the years, that's been subject to a huge amount of accidents, which have been alleviated since the introduction of traffic lights at that location. The A63 has always presented problems for the public and members, inasmuch as it has been a hotspot for accidents. We had one very recently. But what concerns me about this, and again, this is my take on the matter, rather than anything scientific, when we've had applications and pre-applications in the past, and over the last 18 years, we've had a football pitch, we've had a cricket pitch and a cricket pavilion, we've had plans for a solar farm, and all those never really passed muster with planning and most didn't get as far as this room, simply because highways took a very strong view that any further traffic movement, accessing or exiting that locality on the A63 would be detrimental to traffic flow and dangerous. Now, it would appear to me that because this is an application that's been put in retrospectively, I am surprised, panel, that I've not seen the same level of vociferous pushback on this from highways that I've seen on other pre-apps, ideas, planning applications that have been submitted over the last 20 years. I'm struggling to see how a dangerous situation, in the opinion of the council, sorry, I know I'm boring, your councillor, but if you wouldn't raise your eyes too much while I'm speaking, it would be appreciated. Let's all try and stay professional. If we could perhaps ask ourselves why an application, an applications prior that were deemed excessive, dangerous from a traffic perspective at that location, is now good to go without a buy or leave? I'm struggling with that. I hope panel will as well.
Councillor Stevenson and then councillor Ray.
Thank you, Chair. In many years gone by, even before councillor Dobson's time, there used to be a railway line that ran straight across that junction. There was a cottage on the corner, and the bloke who owned that cottage was a chimney sweep called Charlie, which is why it's Charlie Sweep's Corner. In terms of highways, just to move on that point, there's recently been some highways works on the junction, on Charlie Sweep's Junction there, changing the, I think it's prioritisation of the traffic. And I think traffic builds up from those traffic lights back up the 63. So in terms of previous applications around that site, I'm aware there was some, there's some in the planning history of the document. But councillor Dobson, can you give us a bit of a view around, if you can remember, why in the past the authority refused on highways grounds some of those applications? And whether you think that the traffic signal has now made the situation better or worse?
Better switch my mic on. I can understand where you're coming from, but I think, and I will get the advice from the legal, what's before us, we should discuss rather than what happened in the previously. I think it's important, rather than going on off the agenda, shall we say, and something obviously legal can advise me, should we proceed with this question or should we not? Because I feel it's something which is before us and that should be, we should be discussing, rather than going in a history of the previous planning applications.
Just to confirm you're right, Chair, that obviously members are considering the application before them this afternoon. If you would like, though, to continue with getting a view from the speaker about, I suppose, the traffic flows now and what they are like compared to previously, then that's valid because it's to be taken into account as part of this discussion.
Yeah, I would like to answer that one. But the reason, Chair, for my question, and it's referenced in, I think, agenda item nine, which we should come on to later on, is we're told that decisions by the appealing inspector or this panel, we have to recognise that the decisions that are made in those planning applications have a determination on how we apply them to other applications. So the reason I was really asking the question was to understand that the case history on this site clearly is relevant, because for some reason in the past, we've made a slightly different decision. And I want to understand what that was. And my question to officers later will be, is there a policy change since then that's made the difference? That was the reason for my question.
Do you want to hold on to that question when we have the turn to ask the question to the officers? We've got two speakers. If there are specific questions for the speakers to do with this application, I welcome anyone to ask any question. But if not, if you've got a question for the officers, we'll wait for that. Councillor Ray?
Mine was just an observation about this. I think as my day job, I manage some allotments. And people coming to allotments come from early in the morning, so very And people coming to allotments come from early in the morning till very late at night. And it's a steady stream rather than a mass influx if you had like a football match or a cricket match. So, and in my experience, a lot of allotment holders don't use vehicles, they use cycles and they walk a lot. I think it's pretty much the nature of the whole thing, getting back to having local food grown locally, which I think is really important. And I have to make it a question. So would you accept that?
Yeah, I think I'd fully accept that. I mean, obviously, from a local perspective, you want to see local produce grown locally. It's good for health and wellbeing. I'm struggling with the argument that the majority of people perhaps accessing this site, and I can't speak for all sites, but in terms of this site, I've seen scan evidence of cycling and walking. In fact, I really wouldn't encourage people to walk to the location in question because of the sighting of it. But certainly, I also accept your argument completely around there being ebbs and flows in people and how they're using allotment. But certainly around the last bank holiday, and again, perhaps alluding to councillor Stevenson's point about the traffic lights that have been put in just a bit further down the road, it did create a significant backlog at that location of cars to such a degree that the applicant had to use somebody controlling the traffic movement on and off the site. So I accept your argument more broadly, but I'd probably question it in this case.
Right, councillor Stevens, do you want to come back or you're okay? Thank you. Any other questions? In that case, thank you very much, Mr Riley and councillor Dobson. Can we now move on to, we've got a speaker in support and it is... Oh, sorry. Oh, Mr Samuels, if you can come to the table and you have four minutes to address to the panel, please, when you're ready.
Distinguished council members, yeah, I can leave that off, of course. Distinguished council members, thank you for your time today. I'm here today to discuss Roots allotments and our request for planning permission for both our container and signage. Our mission extends far beyond simply providing growing spaces. We're actively working to create blue zone environments similar to those regions in the world where people consistently live the longest and healthiest lives. These blue zones share common elements: strong community connections, active lifestyles, and providing people growing their own food. Through Roots allotments, we're recreating these vital components right here in Leeds. Our members don't just grow food, they build relationships, stay physically active and connect with nature, all crucial factors to improving mental and physical wellbeing across our communities. Oh, no. In an era where many have grown up as part of a supermarket generation, we're not just offering land, we're providing education, community and practical skills to our workshops and teaching programmes. Critically, we teach no-dig methods, a practice that is transforming how we think about soil health. This approach minimises soil disturbance, builds organic matter and supports the vital microorganisms that create healthy soil. Healthy soil doesn't just mean better crops, it means better carbon sequestration, improved water retention and enhanced biodiversity. We're not just growing food, we're actively regenerating our local environments. What makes Roots allotments unique is our accessibility. While Leeds currently faces significant waiting lists for traditional allotments, we've managed to attract new generation of growers, with over 60% of our members have never grown previously or considered joining a council waiting list. We've achieved this by removing barriers and making growing food approachable and straightforward. Regarding our container request, it's worth noting containers are already a common site on farmland across the country. They serve as essential infrastructure for agricultural activities. Our request aligns with established precedents while supporting a vital community service. The demand for growing spaces in Leeds is clear. The lengthy waiting list for traditional allotments demonstrates the community desire to grow their own food. Roots allotments meets this demand while also creating new gardeners through our supportive educational approach. As for our proposed signage, we've taken great care in its design to ensure it meets all planning requirements while reflecting our sustainable values. The detailed visibility displays included in our application demonstrate that the sign's placement ensures clear sightlines for both pedestrians and vehicles with no obstruction to traffic or safety concerns. The sign will not be illuminated, maintaining the natural character of the area and avoiding any light pollution. In keeping with commitment, in our commitment to environmental responsibility, we've selected sustainable and natural materials for its construction. By granting this planning application...
Mr Riley, I think you moved on to the next item. So if you can just keep... Yeah, thank you.
Okay, sorry. And then I'm also happy to answer, this isn't actually down here. I'm also happy to answer any questions regarding kind of the previous questions that were just asked, traffic concerns, et cetera, as we've got nearly 3,000 members across our communities across the country now. And so we've got pretty strong data for any of the questions that were asked. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr Riley? councillor Stevens?
Around the sort of parking element, I know in the documents here, there's a reference that the intention is to have one car parked, which is the staff member connected to the office site. As anyone drives by, you can see there's regularly a lot of cars parked there. So you mentioned data. What's, over the course of a week, on average, how many cars are normally parked at the same time?
I'm just going to work out my calculator real quick. Throughout a week, there'd be around 40 to 50 vehicles. So if you break that down by the hour of our opening hours, it's less than one an hour. Thank you.
I'll just touch you on a point that was made earlier. Obviously, these are retrospective applications. Is there a reason why that's the case, given that elsewhere in the country, I think your co-founder has been in the press saying that you have a very elite planning firm working for you to do this across the country. So what's the excuse here?
So on the planning element, so out of the nine locations we've got to date, six have never asked us to apply for anything as they deem it completely reasonable, what we're doing. So that includes Bath, Sheffield, Nottingham, Chelmsford. And then the main one that people are most likely aware of is our Bristol location. We've had some council battle, I don't know what to call it. And wherever else we've been, the only place that has asked us to apply for planning was, besides Bristol and Leeds, was Stourbridge, which is South Staffordshire Council. And it never went to a committee meeting like this and they just approved it. And that was simply just for the shipping container, the entrance, as that was on an unclassified road. And the aggregate, the track thing, doesn't, wasn't required. They deemed the whole usage within a certificate of lawful development, which they've actually since approved another allotment site, not Roots, but someone else, under the same certificate. So in regards to the retrospective thing, we are understanding that we are allowed to do this, generally speaking, from kind of the total sites that we have. And we are learning that certain councils will kind of take a view on it, that this isn't required. But it seems to be very much on a case-by-case basis to date. Our Bath sites have been running, coming up to four years now, and no one's ever had any issue with them, like the majority of our sites across the UK.
Thank you. Any other questions? councillor Miller?
The report references that the site office is accessed by one part-time member of staff. Is that the only, do you only have one member of staff that works, is employed by the allotment?
Yeah, his name is Spud.
Thank you for that information. How, is the site at capacity in terms of how many people are on the site? Or are there any kind of spare allotments at the minute?
So currently, the site is around 65%, 70% occupied. But what we tend to find is people get so enthused with growing and they tend to take more plots on as time goes on, as they get a discount for more that they take on. And so we tend to find, from the data that we've got to date, which is still quite young, that around 70 to 75%, it starts to pretty much be the same members taking more plots on as they get more enthused with growing, as we simplify the whole process by giving them all the seeds, the tools, the education, et cetera.
If this site does reach capacity, do you think there's any possibility that an additional member of staff might be employed? I ask because the report quite heavily suggests that part of the reason why we shouldn't really be taking any highway concerns into account is because there's only one member of staff that's accessing the site office and therefore the only highway concerns we should have is from one car. So effectively, it doesn't really add anything to the overall balance. But I suppose if there is a possibility that more members of staff in the future would be employed, then that highways element becomes more, potentially more problematic. So maybe are you able to reference kind of other sites and whether it's normal to just have one member of staff?
So the way that we work or the way that we've designed what we've built is this site would never have more than one member of staff. Simply, it just can't afford it, to be quite frank, from an economical standpoint. Like, we have a location in London, which is 32 acres, which we have around 1,000 people growing on now. And that has two members of staff because it's a lot bigger. But this location is kind of on the smaller side of what we do. And it would never need more than what we already have. And to be honest, we wouldn't actually be able to do that even if we wanted to from an economical standpoint.
Thanks, Chair. Can you just clarify, is it 250 plots or 350?
It's 250 plots.
Right, in that case, thank you very much, Mr Samuel, not Mr Riley. I'm all the way bad with the names, so I do apologise for that. Can we now move on to the question to the officers? Yes, you can go back, please, sir. councillor Bithl?
Thank you. In terms of the timings and that they're allowed to be open, a lot of allotment venues will have events on key dates, like bonfire night, et cetera. They'll do like a family hot dog event. And obviously, the current timings would stop that being possible. So should the panel be minded to accept the recommendation, is there capacity for us to work with the team to work out which specific days in winter that they would previously have had to close at seven? They may need extra time in order to have those sorts of events.
Okay, I think it comes, yeah, so the question around the hours of use, it comes back very specifically to what's within the remit of the planning application, which is solely the tool shed and the office. So in terms of anything else that goes on, on the majority of the site is not controlled because we can't control what happens via that use, if that makes sense?
Yeah, let me just clarify. I realise, I realise that's the case. My concern is more that if you are doing an event, I wouldn't like to see a situation where they weren't allowed to access the office at nine o'clock to put the paperwork away because we've told them that it's not allowed. It doesn't feel like it makes a lot of sense. So I totally accept you don't want it just open permanently, but if we can make a list of additional days that that would be useful for, then that would probably be of benefit. Thank you.
We could certainly ask the applicant for their view on that.
councillor Stevenson?
So I've been called worse by my members, don't worry. I'll start with the highways, with what's changed in policy from the one that was refused on, I think it's, well, it's in the packet, paragraph nine. So from a highways point of view, what's changed?
I think each applicant, each application is basically considered on its own merits. And in this instance, for this application, we are only looking at the site office and the tool shed, which has a very low highways impact of potentially one vehicle per day. So, and we have asked for some access improvements to make sure that that access is safe for that use compared to, you know, infrequent use of the field access. The allotment use is something, because that's not the subject of this planning application, we can't consider that. Which application was it that you were saying that we refused?
It's the storage buildings, 337695 was the application. But the real question, the problem is, it's the question of, we've clearly had a highways view on cars going, vehicles going in and out of those junctions. I'm not sure I accept that this is about one car. There are multiple cars going in on that junction. Previously, we must have had a problem with that. So I just want to understand what those concerns were on that junction, whether they're now being overcome.
Yeah, I can cover that one, councillor. Yeah, so that previous application that's referred to in the report that was refused, it was actually for an access to storage at the far south. And it involved basically creating a new made access in through the field, all the way along the length of the field. And because it was a storage facility, it's not agriculture. So it's development that's giving rise to vehicle trips. And those trips then gave rise to a highway harm. And there was also a second reason for refusal, which related to green belt in terms of building, basically eroding the green belt, which again is different to this situation. So I hope that helps.
Which brings me neatly on to my next question. On the, yeah, on there, I think we can see, there's a little bit of, there's a track, isn't there, for cars? Right, yes, where you are, this, yeah. So there's a sort of formation of a track there. So why is that not development in the green belt?
Yeah, so the actual, the historic field access was always there. And there's previously a track in, so that track is all existing. The new bit that you refer to up there, that's a geotextile membrane that's been rolled out and then filled with sort of crushed stone that we stood on on the site visit this morning. So the rolling out of a geotextile membrane is not development. So again, it's not something that falls within planning control.
And then why is the building, as it were, why is it not Class A permitted development if this is an agricultural classification?
Sorry, I only caught the second half there.
Why is this not Class A permitted development if we're saying the land's agricultural?
Yeah, so the buildings themselves, so there are provisions. So the buildings are separate from some, you've got the allotment use and then separately you have these buildings. And because of their size, they are development. The tests through the NPPF are then whether or not they preserve openness or not. Before you get to that, this picks up on one of the points that was raised in the questions earlier, is around whether very special circumstances are required. They're not in this instance because it's not inappropriate development. There are specific exceptions in the NPPF which remove buildings related to agricultural purposes. So simply, they are, they're not inappropriate. But you need to consider whether or not their sighting, design, appearance is acceptable in terms of preserving openness.
Thank you. councillor Hazelwood?
Yeah, in light of everything that we've heard and taken into account councillor Bithl's points about certain dates that we may just want to add in, I would like to move the recommendation, Chair.
Any, shall we move on to comments and then, yeah? councillor Stevenson, did you?
Oh, you've got, sorry, I thought you'd finished your questions.
Yeah, we'll move on. Are there any questions before we go on? Right, let's go into the comments then, yeah?
Well, I had a question, I have one more question.
Make your mind up, councillor Stevenson.
I have got a question.
Question, yeah, okay.
I have a question in order to help me a bit.
In order to help me a bit of mine up.
Let's, let's go for the question then.
So in terms of the, that issue of class A, what I was trying to get to is if class A permitted development rights means if you have agricultural holding, you can build a building, can't you? Whether it's green belt or not, that's the case, isn't it?
Yeah, so for the size of this site, it would be too small to have those rights. So it would require permission.
And the crux of the question there is, but so to be agricultural, we normally ask, don't we applicants, to see the reference of their agricultural holding records with DEFRA for example, to prove that it's agricultural?
On occasion, we do, yes. But in, in this, in this case, as we know it's an agriculture use that's going on because it's evidenced day to day, there are allotments and that's taken for the purposes of planning to be an agriculture use and akin to that. The size of the unit, the agriculture unit, doesn't benefit from permitted development rights to put up buildings. So therefore, these buildings can't benefit, they need planning permission for these buildings. I think the reference that the speaker in support, Mr Samuel, was making, that some authorities haven't asked for applications, is that you get involved in this technical argument as to whether, is it a building or is it a use of the land? Because sometimes you can argue if you place a structure on the land, it becomes a use of the land rather than an actual building as such. We take quite a firm view on it and say there's a strong degree of permanence here. It's unlikely to, to move to all intents and purposes, it has the characteristics of a building, so we treat it as a building, we ask for planning applications for those sort of things.
Right, now that we're done with the questions, any comments? Councillor Stevenson?
Two very quick ones. I think to councillor Bithil's point, condition two is a, is a bit silly really. I don't really see how we're going to enforce this. If somebody comes at nine o'clock at night and opens a padlock, how, how are we going to enforce that? So I can, I can kind of understand why it was there, but in reality, what we're saying is people can go and pick their sprouts, but they can't access the shears from the lock to do it. So I think that's probably a little bit of a silly condition really. And the wider point is, I'm really fed up with these retrospective applications. And I think from a policy point of view Chair, if you want to pick this up, I think we ought to be where we can, looking to see if we can do something around like increasing charges on retrospective applications, because this is clearly a tool that applicants are using time and time again and we keep folding over to them. So that's my comment Chair.
Any other comments? Can we invite David to sum up please?
Yes, thank you Chair. So far I haven't actually picked up any dissenting voices, as it were, to the actual application proposals before us. I note councillor Stevenson's point about some sort of sanction, as it were, against or discouragement from people making retrospective applications. That's not actually, I suppose, I note the point and note the frustration we often share there, but it's not something that is actually within, within our gift. In terms of the extension of the, the, the hours, just, so this is for my benefit when we come to the vote, just so I'm clear, clear on it. It is in members' gift if they so wish to elongate the office opening hours if they come to the view that that won't be harmful to residential amenity. And there is support for that in that it's generally accepted within planning that offices can operate in residential areas without harm to residential amenity. And here we obviously have a site office, which is somewhere away from any residential and any activity which is associated with the site office, is going to be largely imperceptible. So if there is an argument to make, if members want to extend the opening hours of, of the office, then there is a strong planning argument to support that, excepting that in light of the nature of the location, it would be quite difficult for us to enforce it in, in, in any event. So I think that's a position that we've, we've got to. Members will have to reach a view on the office hours, whether they want to pursue that or not and put forward as amendment to the recommendation. Good Chair.
All right, thank you David. Can we take the vote? Could I have a proposal in a second please? Sorry. Councillor Miller, did you want to say something?
Sorry, I was, I was going to propose the, that we do support the application but with the current conditions applied. I appreciate what the members have said, but I think it potentially sets a bit of a slippery slope if we don't have any kind of time limits on when the site is used into the evening. I'm also a little bit concerned that we're suggesting just because something is too difficult to enforce, it shouldn't be, you know, attempted. I don't think we can say that. So I don't think there's any material reasons not to support the application, but my preference would be that that condition still applies.
In that case, would you, would you like to propose as it stands, the application? Before you come back, I'll ask, is it something to do with similar sort of point councillor Bithil?
Yeah, but the opposite.
Right, okay.
So perhaps we need to vote first on whether we want to keep condition two, I guess?
Yeah, you could keep it or you could vary it. So for example, you could have, you could just vary the extent, the opening hours and make it specific to the office. You've got that option.
Do you mean as in, so we keep the office as what's on the piece of paper and we change it so that they can access the shears for their sprouts all times?
I actually thought you were saying the opposite to that. I thought you were saying you wanted the office to be open to a later hour, so when they have events, if they were to have events there, that if they need to access the office for whatever reason, then they can access the office. I didn't realise that you were putting that in respect of the tool shed as well.
So I, when I said it, I was talking about both, but I wasn't clearly specific enough and that's my bad. Maybe, maybe just both till ten. Just all buildings till ten.
Councillor Miller, did you want to come back or are you okay with what you just said earlier on?
I, I mean, my position hasn't changed, so I, I'm still happy to propose that the conditions apply.
Councillor.
Thank you Chair. My, my concern is about the events because with an event, you bring in a lot of cars and obviously we have got concerns already about highways issues. You know, as the gentleman says, forty cars a week over the weeks, okay, but when you get two hundred and fifty cars leaving an event, it does cause big issues. But I'm more leaning with the opening hours, yeah, you know, we shouldn't, you know, if someone wants to pick the sprouts at ten o'clock, like you said, fair enough, but that's one person. But the event's concern me because, yeah, okay.
Okay councillor Hazelwood?
I was just going to second the year round, the ten o'clock year round.
Do you want to put the alternative motion and then, and then obviously you can second it, whoever wants to second and we'll take the vote and then we'll move back here?
Okay Chair, so the motion is to vary condition two to be both buildings open from, I think it says seven AM till ten PM, all months of the year.
Seconded by councillor Hazelwood, all in favour? Anyone against? Any abstentions? Last carried.
Thank you Chair. Just to confirm then, that members have resolved to grant planning permission, this is for the two shipping containers for use as a site office and tool shed. And this is subject to the conditions set out on pages nineteen and twenty, but the variation of condition two to allow both of those facilities to open from the hours of seven AM to ten PM, twelve months of the year. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Bithil?
I've never been as upset with myself as I am just now. In my motion, I didn't actually comment on the planning permission itself, it was just the condition. Do I need to have said in the motion that it also included approval? Or does it just get taken as read?
I, I think that was sort of intrinsic, it's what you were saying.
Excellent, I just don't, I just don't want it to come back and realise I've made a terrible error, thank you.
No, no, you're fine.
Thank you. Moving on to item eight, again it'll be led by Andrew. When you're ready Andrew.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, so this is the second of the related applications, which is the retention of the non-illuminated freestanding entrance sign. And I'll, given the previous presentation, I'll skip through the slides. Again, you're familiar with the green belt location and the, and the site and the location of the sign at the entrance to the site. This is the revised plan that was submitted during the course of the application, which cites the sign slightly further back than where it was originally and where it is on site at the moment, as we viewed on site this morning. So that moves the sign back between three point eight and four point four metres, back from the, the curb edge of Selby Road. And that's the, the sign as proposed, two point four metres wide and one point two metres high. And again, there it is in, in situ in its current location. So as I say, it would be set back slightly further than, than shown here. And again, these slides are sort of pertinent to the visibility displays up and down the A sixty-three. And so the revised location of the sign is considered to be acceptable insofar as it's clear of that visibility display secured on the, on the planning application. In terms of other matters, signs are governed by the control of advertisements regulations, which is slightly different from the planning regime. So the matters to consider are around amenity and public safety, taking into account provisions of the development plan insofar as their material. So in this particular instance, the key issues are around visual and residential amenity and also highway safety. So in terms of the visual amenity, the sign is considered to be relatively modest in terms of its size and scale, fairly muted colours in terms of its appearance. And again, it's situated within the site, some distance away from the nearest residential properties. Usually a residential impact would come from illumination or something of that kind or dominance, but that's not considered to be the case in this particular instance. And again, we've talked in detail already around the, the secured visibility space of ninety metres in either direction and that's necessitated moving the sign back into the site. So on that basis, the revised sighting is considered to be acceptable, as is the, the design of the sign. So on that basis, it's recommended for approval, subject to the conditions in the report. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. We, we have speakers against the application. Could I invite councillor Dobson and Mr Riley to the table and between? Both of you got four minutes to share.
I don't know where Mr Riley is, am I okay to proceed?
Sure, in that case you have four minutes.
Yeah, it won't be four minutes Chair, it's, it's just simply to say that obviously members who've been on the site visit this morning have seen the, the sign in question. It's, it's a very large, hard to miss sign. I am broadly satisfied with the, the comments that have been made and the suggestions that's been put forward from panel. My concerns were around the highways from the last part of the application. The only thing is, I know we all have different levels of driving experience, it does somewhat catch the eye when one is on a busy A road and I wouldn't like to think it was too obtrusive and caught too many people's attention in passing. But I think in this particular case, listening to the arguments that's been progressed this afternoon, rather than progress my kink and you impression and try and hold back the tide too much, I do suggest it's probably a fait accompli. So I'll leave my thoughts and observations at that.
All right, thank you. Any questions for councillor Dobson? Right, thank you councillor Dobson. Any questions for the officers? Sorry, we've got the, we've got, we've, we've got Mr Samuel this time supporting the application. I was nearly there to say Mr Riley, but I'm sorry Mr Samuel.
Distinguished councillor members, thank you again. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of our offering allotment. In terms of the sign and the recommendations that you seek to make based off my brief conversations this morning, as I bumped into a few council members, we're happy to take on board any advice and guidance that you wish to provide and ensure that it's as safe as possible based off any recommendations that you make. But just to highlight again that we do have very low traffic on our sites, as we do encourage all of our members to walk and cycle where best possible. And yeah, thank you.
Right, thank you Mr Samuel, any questions? No, thank you very much. Any questions for the officers? Councillor Stevenson?
It says freestanding sign. Technically it's a fixed to two wooden posts, but the question I was going to ask is what's the difference in planning terms about this and if somebody just parked an agricultural trailer with a sign on it? Are they dealt with differently in terms of their nature?
I think, yeah, the sorts of signs you're referring to, the sorts of things you get at the edge of the motorway on a trailer, advertising, whatever, it does get somewhat involved because they are, they're clearly movable, which I think is how they get around the regulations, off the top, without the regulations to hand, but legal may be able to assist. So I think they, essentially they're used basically as, as wide scale advertising with, with ease, without needing to worry about applying for advertisement consent and they can simply move them around.
The reason I ask, I don't particularly like the sign, but if they could just put it on a trailer anyway, my point is rather moot, so that's why I asked the question in the first place.
If, if they were to, if we refused the sign and they were then to put up a trailer or something and leave it in position like that, I think we'd probably be still seeking for an application, assuming it's got some degree of permanence, it's going to be there all the time and it is related to the use of the, use of the land, as Jonathan pointed out to me, quite often those trailer signs that you see by the side of the motorways are just advertising anything and everything and, and totally unrelated to the use of the, use of the land. So I think we would pursue an application.
Any other questions? Any comments? Councillor Sharp?
Thanks Chair. I do accept that that stretch of road is a busy stretch, but as I always say, site visits, it's good to go on a site visit and stand and see. And after this morning's site visit, I think the recommended improvements from the highways and the sign are absolutely fine.
Right, any other comments? David?
Thank you Chair. It seems that members have expressed a view that the sign is possibly acceptable, so I think we're probably moving towards a recommendation that advertisement consent be granted Chair.
Can we have a proposal in a second? Thank you councillor Bithil, anyone to second? Councillor Bromley? All in favour? Any one against? Any abstentions? Last carried.
Thank you Chair, just confirm then, that members have resolved to grant advertisement consent, subject to the conditions set out on pages thirty-seven and thirty-eight of the report. Yeah?
Right, move on to item nine and this time is David, which you will go through the appeal process. You'll have to change around, yeah? Oh, you'll have to change around here. We're just waiting for you, councillor Hazelwood.
All right, thank you, Chair. We've actually got, now got just a couple of reports for members' information. We haven't done many of these recently, but it's our normal working practice. When we brought applications to Plans Panel for determination, they end, and when they end up in the, in the scenario that they end up at appeal, then we normally bring back a report from members' information with a copy of the, a copy of the appeal decisions. We actually have, I will mention, a, a further appeal decision that we received this morning, so I'll touch on that very briefly at the end. But as I say, these, these are just for information, these just for, for members to, to note. So the first appeal decision relates to the McKeer Hotel, Leeds Road, Collingham. Appreciate, not all members will have been on the panel at the time that this application was determined, but many men of the members here will be familiar with, with the case. There's a site outlined in red, I'll just go through some slides just to set a little bit of context for the appeal decision to start off with. So there's a site outlined in red. It's on the southern edge of Wetherby, you've got the Wetherby Road to the south and fields, open land further south. Then to the north and west, you've got residential development, and then you've got Boston Road, which leads to the centre of the, the town there, currently occupied by the, the hotel buildings, the site. And there's an aerial shot showing what I've just described. So the proposal really was in three parts. You can see on the eastern side of the site, the left-hand side of the slide, as you're looking at it, it was a, a little unit there with associated car parking. Then to the front, down to the bottom sort of south-west corner of the, sorry, southeast corner of the site, is the care home development. And then towards centre of the site, we had the eight senior living units, independent living units, in effect dwellings, and they're for the fifty-five plus. The, the little that occupied around about forty percent of the site. Now, I suppose the key thing here from the, from the officer and the member's perspective and paragraph in the, in the report, so I've got the wrong glasses on, so I can't see it, but in the report, you'll see that we had five or six reasons for refusal. One of the primary reasons why this application was refused was that the site is allocated for housing development, and we wanted to protect that allocation, because that obviously makes a significant contribution towards delivery of the, the housing that Leeds needs. So the principle of putting a retail unit on there was contrary to that housing allocation, so that formed one of the reasons for refusal. There was another, more or less in principle reason for refusal, which related to introducing the little unit, a retail unit, out of centre, because our policies are very much aimed, as is national planning policy, very much aimed at protecting the vitality and viability of existing town centres. So there's a starting position against, in planning policy terms, against citing new retail developments out of centre, or even on the edge of centre, that's subject to certain tests. So that, they were our matters in terms of principle, and then we had also issues with the scheme around details, the level of amenity provided for the occupiers of the care home, concerns around landscaping and tree loss, and we also had, more so during the course of the appeal, concerns around about biodiversity net gain. Now, obviously, the report sets out, the appeal was allowed, and we lost those, those arguments. And I'm not going to go into much detail on that because we do have the report in front of you, there's some officer commentary in the report, and you do have the appeal decision there also. I would just say that obviously from, from our perspective, and I'm sure we're probably all of the same view, this is a very disappointing decision, because the approach that we have taken, and we'll probably continue to take, is that we take a very much a plan-led approach to these assessing development proposals. This is a site that was allocated for housing, it's gone through a lengthy process to gain that allocation. It was important in the sense that it's, that allocation gives some sort of certainty, as the development plan is supposed to, in terms of what's going to be located where and in what sort of volume. So when you see departures from that, it's obviously a, a matter of disappointment and concern to us. But having said that, the inspector has set out the planning reasons why they've come to, or why he has come to contribute, contribute on this particular circumstance, and as such, there's very little we can do about that. That's just something that we have to accept and put our disappointment to one side. Any other comment I would make, just picking up on something that councillor Stevenson drew attention to in one of the previous matters about consistency of decision-making, there is a bit in the report that talks about, yes, that's very important, we won't be necessarily bound by this decision when we're looking at other sites, because as the report points out, this is set on a particular set of circumstances, and it's very unlikely that we're going to be faced with those sets of circumstances in terms of this form of development on the site of this nature. Again, the most likely scenario is if they came in to revise their proposal in some way, but otherwise, it's going to be very unusual for us to face the same sort of development as we've, we've got here. So as much as I was going to say on that one, unless members have got any comments or questions.
Any questions or comments? Stevens?
Two questions, Chair. If, I remember being sat here, have a land supply, at that point we were told we need to get sites in to have it. Now we have the problem, we have an oversupply of land. So is there a facility where we can take sites out of the sap now and get us back to near the target to avoid this happening again? Or is that not allowed?
I think you would have to do that through the, the review of the development plan in terms of setting targets and then the allocation, but that, that would be the, the process that would go through. But I think it's, it's extremely unlikely that it will result in sites coming out, it's more, we're going to be finding land for, for more, more housing. But I, I do take on, on board the point because it's, you get into a position where you're trying to allocate enough housing for the, the city and then you end up being criticised for it, and that's, it, it just seems a little bit perverse.
Yeah. And then the other point was just to say, in terms of the forty conditions attached, hypothetically, had we have taken a different approach and approved this locally, would have there have been any conditions we would have wanted to be attached on this that, that have not been attached by the inspector?
Yeah, I haven't gone through the conditions in detail, but what I would say is that the way that the conditions work is that the local planning authority in, in dealing with the appeal, in defending the appeal, is obliged to suggest conditions that would be attached, and they would form the basis of the discussion from the inspector and with the, with the appellant. So I think it's unlikely there'd be additional conditions that we would have attached in this instance.
Any other questions? Right, in that case, could I ask members to note the outcome of this appeal decision? Now move on to item ten, it's again David.
Sorry, I've got, yes, sorry, start again. This is a slightly unusual one, it's, relates to scheme. Permission four, and the applicant then appealed against the conditions that we had imposed on the development. Although the appeal was allowed, actually what the inspector did was endorse the council's approach. It was allowed on the basis that there were two relatively minor variations to the wording of conditions. The intent of the conditions remained, it's just those conditions were reworded, and the details of that is set out in the report. So just to remind members of the scheme, there it is, it's an open field site on the edge of the village of Walton. There's the aerial shot of it, it was land which is designated as rural land. What members may be able to pick out there is that, it's quite difficult to see, but there is a pond in there, a part of the site. This is the scheme, the development was contained to the north-east, sorry, yes, north-east corner of the site, with the eight glamping units, one which was an accessible unit. There is a, an access, if I can get there, it comes up on the screen, vehicle, new vehicle or access created to a new junction onto the road there, and then there was a pedestrian access leading from the main glamping site out across here. We did attach an awful lot of conditions to the planning permission when it was granted, and that really reflected the environmental effects that would flow from this development. It was complex. It's currently a, a greenfield site, it's creating a new access across a field, new junction with a rural character, you wanted conditions on there to protect the rural character, such as landscaping, restricting lighting, those sort of things, there's nature conservation, biodiversity net gain interests in there, and then there was the additional footpath that was being created, as well as provision of the accessible units. We have a slide which shows the nature of the units. So the number of conditions just reflected the sensitivity of the site and in some ways the novel nature of the application. But as I say, the inspector supported the council, to all intents and purposes, and deemed that those conditions were appropriate and necessary. Thank you, Chair.
Any questions or comments? Go on, yeah, yeah, you had it.
Was I talking to myself then?
Just, just to let members know, just, we will bring a report back about this, but we have received the application, the appeal decision this morning on the Sangate Stables, Sangate Terrace Kipax site. Members may recall this, this was a retrospective application for a gypsy traveller plot, which we brought to Plans Panel. Ultimately, members resolved to refuse planning permission. Just to say that the appeal has come through now, it has been granted planning permission, but it's a temporary planning permission for three years. The inspector, in effect, has granted planning permission on the basis of the placing great weight on the needs of the children, that there's a child there who's of primary school age, and the three years reflects the, the fact that that will see that that child through their primary school education. But we'll bring back a more detailed report at, at a future panel date for them. Thank you, Chair.
Right, let's start again. Date and the time of the next meeting will be Thursday, twenty-seventh of February.
That concludes today's meeting. If everyone could please look at the room and we can switch off the webcast, and also don't forget to take your cups back where you found them. Thank you, have a good day.